Okay. Over. Yes. Yes.
Okay. Then start then. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to Tumwater's Joint Planning Commission and Tree Board meeting. Seven o'clock and the meeting is called to order. I'll start with roll call for the Planning Commission and then we'll go to Tree Board. Commissioner Edwards?
Here.
Mr. Schumacher is excused. Vice Chair Sullivan?
Present.
Commissioner Tobias, did we?
He is here. He will be back shortly.
Oh, okay. So he's running late a little bit. Just walking in, Commissioner Tobias. Commissioner Varela will be a little bit late. Commissioner Von Holtz? And me, Commissioner Robbins.
Sure. Granton with Tree Board. Accenture. Brody.
Here.
We got Jim Sador is excused absent and Brad is also.
Brent.
Brent, sorry. Brad is here.
Not sure if she's able to make it tonight.
All right.
Both groups have quorum, so we're good to go. All right. The only change to the agenda that I know about is we're going to do some introductions since it's been a while since we were together and. Hear from the consultants. I'll just go ahead and start and say, I'm Elizabeth Robbins. I joined the Planning Commission in 2020 and had a career working.
Sure. I'm Trent Granton. I'm the Chair of the Tree Board. Been on the Tree Board since 2011, 2012, somewhere in there. I'm a landscape architect. Kind of interesting to come from a different perspective of being an arborist or, you know, somebody who's constantly trying to save trees, but. I like trying to get it from both angles and do the environmental thing. So go ahead. I'll pass them on to Hannah.
This is the meeting.
I just wanted to let you know that I don't know if this is happening for other virtual attendees, but the audio is cutting in and out really badly. So I'm not, we're not hearing everything that's happening in the room.
For me, it's not cutting in. It's just really quiet sometimes.
Yeah.
Okay. I'm a civil engineer. I work for the Department of Natural Resources and I've been retired long enough to enjoy it.
I'm Kelly Von Holtz and I've been on the Planning Commission since 2022. And I am currently the Public Relations and Marketing Manager at the Evergreen State College. But I've been a communicator for the past thirty years. I hate saying that one. Thirty years with the state of Washington.
Michael Tobias. I've been on the Planning Commission since 2018. Current state worker, proud renter and resident of Tumwater, Washington.
Mike Jackson, a professional forester, owner of Professional Forestry Services here in Tumwater. And I've been on the Tree Board since it originated.
Yeah, I'm Alyssa Joneswood. I am the CEO of Tumwater, the state of Leeport.
Name is Brad Medrude. I'm the Planning Manager at the city.
My name is Erica Smith Erickson. I am the Housing and Land use Planner for City of Tumwater and I just started in February of this year.
My name's Brody Cobal. This is also my second Tree Board meeting. I work for the Department of Natural Resources in public policy and I'm a small business owner in the urban forestry sector here in Tumwater.
Let's go online and I'll call on Commissioner Sullivan.
Hi, Megan Sullivan, Vice Chair. Use she/her pronouns. I have a background in public health. I work in nonprofits and I've been a member of the Planning Commission from 2016.
This is for you all. Thank you. Commissioner Edwards?
Hi, good evening, everyone. I am Grace Edwards. I am a member of the Tumwater Planning Commission. I have been on the commission since, I believe, November of 2021. And I am a Business Analyst with the state of Washington.
Let's go to Kim. Do you want to introduce yourself?
Sure. My name is Kim Frappier. I am an environmental planner and urban forester with DCG Watershed.
Great. And Devin?
My name is Devin Melville. I've been with Watershed, now DCG Watershed, for three years as an environmental planner and this year I became a certified arborist as well.
Great. That's who, that's who we all are. All right. Any other changes to our agenda tonight? Let's go to, for the Planning Commission approval of our minutes. We have a clump of them from, some of them going back to January. Glad to see those. Does anybody have either any remarks or comments or revisions or anything like that, or is there a motion to approve?
I'm going to approve the minutes of April 11th, April 25th, and January 10th.
Thank you.
Second.
Thanks. That was Vice Chair Sullivan seconding. Any discussion about those minutes? Then it's been moved and seconded to approve all three sets of minutes from April 11th, April 25th, and January 10th, 2023. All in favor of approving all three sets, please say aye.
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 Great. Any opposed? Great. Thanks, everybody. Those are all approved. Let's go to Commissioners' reports and then we'll go to Tree Board members. Anybody? Commissioner Tobias?
So as I stated earlier, I am a renter living in Tumwater. At my apartment recently, I received this packet which contains update, renting guides in Tumwater, renting in Tumwater, a guide for landlords and tenants. It contains updates to the Tumwater Municipal Code, including updates to things like notices to increase rent, notices to vacate, et cetera. I didn't know if that was part of a, like, citywide effort to, you know, get them to all apartments, but I can assure you that at least at my apartment in Northwest Tumwater, I was on the receiving end of these. So thank you for, I didn't know what the specifications were for that outreach, but I do appreciate it.
Just for information, this is Brad Medrude. The City Council approved back in December a couple of ordinances. One was essentially the Tenet Protection Ordinance that became effective April 8th. In that ordinance is a requirement that all landlords provide information, which Commissioner Tobias showed, about what the rights and responsibilities are for tenants and landlords. And in, as we're putting this out, we sent out a mailer to all the identified rental properties in the city and also did a social media campaign. We were very pleased, the number of calls that we received back, once we did that, primarily from landlords, were very positive in the sense that they were asking for clarification on what exactly they needed to do and then going ahead with doing that. So we're pleased to see that that's gone out there.
Other Commissioners, do you want to report on anything? Shaking heads. How about the Tree Board?
I don't have anything. Anybody else?
All righty. Good. Thanks. Brad, how about the Managers' Report?
I don't have anything. I just wanted to quickly mention that we included in the packet our most current meeting schedule and the agendas. We're already out of date, so the next meeting we'll have, I'll provide it updated.
Great, thank you. I really like seeing those. It helps me get a kind of a glance, you know, where we are with things. So thanks for keeping those updated. How about the Coordinator's Report?
The heritage tree that the Tree Board voted on last meeting was approved by City Council and is being added to the Heritage Tree Act on the city's website. We were awarded $40,000 of funding from DNR for a grant to update our street tree inventory, for an inventory of others from the owned properties, and create a maintenance plan and schedule and cost estimates for keeping up with the maintenance properties. This checks off, what, six or seven actions from the Urban Forestry Management Plan, so we got the maximum award. I'm also going to be applying for a federal urban community forestry grant that's open right now. Short application, only seven pages, but I'm hoping that, fingers crossed, that can get us funding to support the urban forester, that the Urban Forestry Management Plan calls for as well. And yes, if we don't get the initial federal funding, there will be grants through foundations such as Arbor Day Foundation and American Forests that we'll apply for if we don't get the original funding. I have a report on the trees given away at Arbor Day. We had a great Arbor Day celebration. We collected information on the address for those getting their trees planted here. And thirty-six percent of the trees given away were given to Tumwater residents. We have people coming from as far as Tacoma, Idaho, Yell, a lot from the county of Lacey. But another way of framing that is that all of the trees were given away in the Deschutes Watershed, so that's good. So that's why I say so.
Glad to hear that. All right. This is a chance for general public comment. It looks like we have a few people online. I'll call on Jerome Tuanyo first. Would you like to address the joint group tonight, Mr. Tuanyo?
Hello. Good evening, Jerome from the Jolt News. Don't really have a comment to make. Just want to monitor and watch the meeting. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you for being here. Glad you're covering us. Let's go to Charlotte Persons. Would you like to address the Commission and Tree Board tonight?
Yes, please. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Please state your name, if you would, and who you represent or yourself and where you live.
I'm Charlotte Persons. I live in northeast Olympia and I do not represent, but sometimes represent, Black Hills Audubon Society. And because of that, I was a stakeholder for the meetings, the stakeholder meetings on the new tree and vegetation regulation update. So, and also because we recognize how important your code update will be because we expect Olympia and Tumwater to try to make theirs as close to yours as possible. So anyway, I want to tell you that that was a very good experience being in the stakeholder groups and that I was really pleased when I saw the codes because I feel like we weren't really listened to. And I also listened to some of the joint meetings you had before where you were discussing these. I think that you are already doing a great job on this. I did send in written comments and I hope. I hope you received them. I sent them in last night, forgot them today or not. So I don't want to repeat what I said, really, except that I'm hoping that you will, as you rethink this new system of having minor permits for homeowners, basically residents, and then major permits for developers for new development, that you take advantage of that. And so, for example, when you're thinking about fining people for illegally removing a tree, make that fine higher for people who must or companies that must have to, that developer level, that major permit. I think that will help with the enforcement. And on the other hand, some of you, you have a lot of things to be decided still in this code update. And one of those things is the incentives for developers. So I think that, yes, we need, you need a firm hand on one side, but you also need to offer incentives to help people want to protect trees. And I don't think that that has been very well sussed out yet, but I have confidence you will. And thank you for, again, for listening to us.
Great, thank you. Thanks for making the time to be here tonight and we have received your comments. Thank you very much. Let's go to Margaret Fleming. I think I'm, if I got that right. Would you like to address the Planning Commission and Tree Board tonight? And if so, would you state your name and where you live and who you represent?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm sorry, everybody asked that. Yes, my name is Margaret Fleming. I live in Olympia, somewhat close to Tumwater, and I represent myself and all the people and creatures who have to come after me. I wanted to say that regarding your plans, that definitions matter and to not let your efforts be stymied by a lack of definitions and that I've read where there's a thought line of categorizing trees, both to an exceptional and a significant categories with two feet in diameter being for the exceptional and twelve, one to two feet, being for the significant. And at this point in our existence, mature shading and oxygen generating land, trees, we need to save them, every one of them that we can. I also wanted to mention that I think, from what I've seen, both in Tumwater and Olympia, I have friends that live in Tumwater, have some input to my ears about this too, that tree services, that the trimmers, the cutters, the arborists should be not only licensed, but also subject to fines above anything that a homeowner could face because a homeowner may only run across this once in a while. Whereas all these other people who are the tree service people, they do this all the time. So they should know what is needed to be done and be held accountable for that. And I also recommend that there's a separation between the decide, what I call the deciders versus the people doing the removals or, well, yeah, the removals. Because I, to my, I think that the deciders should be the professionals, the arborists, who are assigned at random from a pool of arborists who will decide, like, for trees that need to be removed, whether or not it's a legitimate concern. Because that way, there's no conflict of interest as to whether money for a job to remove the trees is really the motivating factor. It's actually the health of the tree is the issue. And that also, I'm not totally familiar with the Tumwater system, but if you have a system where there's a replacement of trees, if trees do have to be removed and then new ones have to be planted, that there be some kind of life, tree life oversight because someone could plant a tree, so you could take down a massive amount of shade and then trees are planted to meet the requirements, but they're not tended to, they die, so you still end up with no trees. Or worse, people do things and then they sell or it goes into foreclosure and then it's lost track and it's not followed through on as far as maintaining the canopy and the shade canopy that the cities need. That's all.
Great, thank you. Thanks for making the time to be here for our meeting too. I will just note that Commissioner Varela has joined the meeting now, so glad he's here. There was one other somebody on, but it was just a telephone number and I can't tell.
Looks like they dropped off.
Okay.
That was actually me. I was on the phone listening in until I came to my computer. So I've been on the entire time. Thank you.
Okay, great. Glad you're on the Zoom call. Thanks. All right. Any other, did we hear from anybody other than the comments we have or any other?
No, we received four emails and one email was just asking for information on how to attend the meeting and the other three were provided to the members of the Planning Commission and the Tree Board today.
Great. Thank you. Is anybody else up there? All right. Well, let's move into our work session then. Item number 11, our Joint Planning Commission and Tree Board briefing on the Tree and Vegetation Preservation Regulation date. And Brad, do you want to introduce it or should we go right to Kim?
I will be taking the lead on the presentation today.
Okay, good.
Devin will be in support and so will Erica and Alyssa. So as I'm going through this presentation for the members in the room and online, if you have questions, please let us know. I'm trying to figure out how to share screen and see everybody, so just give me a moment as I try to figure this out. Or I may ask Alyssa nicely if she could help me with this. Could you help me with this so I can actually see the screen with the presentation and whoever may have questions?
For those that are on the Zoom call, you know, if we don't get to you and you've got your hand raised, you might have to just interrupt us. Because we may not be able to see you right off the bat.
Interrupting is fine.
Okay.
Okay.
Millennial skills will go so far.
I'm new to this electronics. Anyway. For today's meeting, we have a fairly extensive amount of stuff to get through. And really, I wanted to sort of lay out the whole process for the Planning Commission and the Tree Board members so you're comfortable, number one, with where we are, how we got here, and also familiar with the documents that you're going to be asked to look at. I have no expectation that you've sat down and read it. If you have, I'm concerned. I appreciate your effort. It is a very dense topic to do, address, and we're going to allow a bit of time for us to go through it, answer any questions you may have. So if you have something that isn't addressed tonight, we will definitely get to it in the upcoming meetings. We'll cover, first of all, the general issue, why we're discussing this. I'm going to ask each of you two questions to answer so we get sort of a baseline before we start this overall process. Explain a little bit about the background of the process, what we, where we have been, all that. Talk a little bit about how this relates to all the other city priorities, you know, that the city has and how important that is. Talk a little bit about all the public engagement actions that we've taken to date to get to this point. We'll then actually start to go through the draft amendments themselves. And then we'll sort of break, we'll have, we have some related issues that have come up that are not necessarily reflected yet in the ordinance, that probably will be, that we'll need to talk about. I'll give you a quick update on where we are on the landscaping code and the street tree plan updates because we're doing all those at the same time. And then I'll walk you through what the public approval process will be for this ordinance. So tonight, this is a briefing on the amendments. The intent is to, again, to give you a background, to know what you're going to be doing and looking at when you get the actual ordinance in hand at your next joint meeting and be prepared to answer any questions about that. So the issue is, we really haven't updated our tree preservation code since 2006. There has been a number of things that have occurred since then. Number one, the Urban Forestry Management Plan was reviewed and approved by, through the Planning Commission, the Tree Board, and the City Council in 2021, after four years of process. The Urban Forestry Management Plan is important because it established the idea that we want the right tree in the right place, which means really, in our case, it also laid out the process and what are the next steps to enact that plan, which is updating our regulations, which is what this is. As I mentioned, the purpose of this briefing is to really give you an idea of the sort of totality of what you're going to be looking at so you have a good idea of how those elements may relate. So you're not just, you know, diving into the code and trying to read it from, you know, start to finish and assume that you're going to be able to get it by the end. And also sort of give you a little bit of hints on, here are some really important things to focus on that we're going to focus a lot of attention on and here are some things that you can review and so forth that aren't as important as some of the others. Derek, so the two questions that I would like to ask each of the members of the Tree Board and the Planning Commissioner are this. First of all, I have to. Number one, what were the big takeaways for you from the community conversations and the public outreach process that was started in November on this project? And number two, what is the primary issue that you want to see addressed as part of these code amendments? I have ideas of what you may say to those, but I don't know what you're going to actually say. So Elizabeth, if you want to start with the Planning Commissioners and then Trent, we'll go through the Tree Board members.
Sure. I'll look to Planning Commissioners if anybody wants to start in. Commissioner Kirkpatrick?
I think my biggest takeaway is that this is a complex effort, that there's a lot to be done. Existing ordinances do not sufficiently cover what needs to be covered. A great deal of effort put into getting us where we are today. The public involvement sessions were interesting in that they discussed all sorts of different areas, but they are, you know, there's no center of the target. Everything is going all the way through the sessions, which leaves us and staff with the effort necessary to bring everything together. It's a long process to get there. Primary issue that I have that, you know, not a major important issue, but it's a primary issue I'm looking at is to avoid unfunded mandates here to the individual homeowner. Specifically, having paid arborists in the past, I think the cost is way out of reach from an equity standpoint for a large portion of the population out there. I would suggest as a possible step that the city contract with a group of arborists and allocate hours to individuals when the city mandates they have input from an arborist.
Ms. Von Holtz?
I agree. I think that this has unfolded as a very complex issue. And although there is a lot of public interest, it's across, you know, it's all across the board. There's no bullseye of, oh, we need to focus here. So that is going to make it interesting. And just like Commissioner Kirkpatrick said, my interest is to make sure that there aren't any unfair burdens to homeowners due to anything that we propose.
Commissioner Tobias?
What I'm hearing a lot in the public comments is, you know, sort of about heritage trees or similar, the idea that, you know, the trees are more than just a, you know, an obstacle for people to overcome in the sake of development. They are part of the common heritage of our city and the people who live within it and people throughout the Northwest. And, you know, I think that the big question becomes, you know, how do we, how do we measure something as intangible as, you know, the common heritage of all mankind in our little corner of the world? As well as, you know, if we can't. if we can't set aside trees for preservation, like we don't have the funds to create, say, another park or a nature preserve, how can we, you know, maintain a stable level of tree canopy while also leaving open the option for people and industry to grow within Tumwater as well? So it's finding that balance, I think, between heritage and development.
Thank you. I'll, I'll look to the online folks. Vice Chair Sullivan, your thoughts?
Yeah. Well spoken, Terry, about the complexity of things. I think some things that stood out to me related to community conversations were trying to balance equity and environmental justice and environmental preservation with like, how will this impact homeowners, like Commissioner Van Holtz said, and what does it look like to functionally implement? And so I think some of the things that stuck in my mind were how do we measure and quantify and incentivize? And like, what is the balance between incentives and penalties? So I think it's just, there's too many things to say. There's just one thing, but personally, one thing I'm, I'm interested in is how can we preserve the trees that we have without being and replace, I guess, if they have to be cut down. Those are, that's the that's the thing that I'm hoping we are able to carry forward, I guess, is what I would say.
Thank you. Commissioner Varela?
I'll, I'll keep it relatively brief. I think what the common theme I keep coming across is how do we balance the desire to preserve Tumwater as it is and maintain what we're, what we're used to, what we enjoy about the city? And also the need to change and what does that actually look like? We still need to expand. Population is growing. We want to bring business in, but we don't want to make Tumwater so unrecognizable. So how do we, how do we find that? That middle ground that achieves both of those ends? And as far as the primary issue, there's a lot of talk about, you know, incentives and then penalties, but really neither of those, I think, are necessarily going to get us where we need to be if we don't have a shared vision and moving towards a common direction. Otherwise, you're going to have penalties and things that are not equitable across the board because they're essentially just trying to hit moving targets continually. So that, that is a delicate balance and I don't know if there's a specific answer for that.
Yeah, thank you. I think Commissioner Edwards is, oh, good, okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Go ahead.
Yeah, and I would just really want to agree with, with all of the comments. I think that they were really well spoken and things that I kind of was going to bring up myself. And so, you know, the complexity and and all of that. And I really, I think I would just add and kind of emphasize my hope with us in, in doing all of this is really to be forward thinking, right? Not only doing what we feel like is best now, but also thinking about the future and how this is going to impact our community years down the line and just being really aware of that.
Great, thank you. I think that's all the Planning Commissioners but me. I'll go ahead and just say, yeah, good comments, everybody. Well, I guess what impressed me about the public outreach was number one, that we did it. Thank you, Watershed Group. That was good. And it was also you know, kind of creatively done because so much of it was online. And I know that that can be both a blessing for getting more participation, but also maybe sometimes difficult if you're not right there in person with people. So I really I'm pleased that it went as well as it did and there, there were a number of opportunities for people to do that. You know, if there's, there's more coming, great. I think that's, that's really good. One of the things that I'm most concerned about seeing addressed in the code amendments is the yeah, I think it's been touched on and maybe said a little bit differently, but kind of a holistic approach, remembering that the the trees are part of the ecosystem that we all need to be able to support, you know, the habitat, the corridors, the different values that we place upon trees and the communities of trees, whether monetary or aesthetic or some other, some other way to think about that. And so thinking about how we, how we measure the success of the code ultimately, I'd like to see that those are tied to that vision that's encapsulated in the comp plan or elements under the comp plan and the, and the overall urban forestry plan. To, you know, to me, that's that shared vision articulated and I'd like to make sure that we have, if we're measuring things, that we tie things back to that vision. Lastly, maybe a question myself of, of the group is kind of like what Commissioner Kirkpatrick was saying is I'd be interested, you know, when there's going to be a cost to implement the code amendments, it'd be nice to know what that is. And then who bears that cost? Is it the city generally? Will it be potentially moved to homeowners or property owners or developers? And what, what are those? And, you know, just making sure we understand what, what the costs are to implement. Tree Board?
Does anybody want to go first? Mike, do you want to go first?
Well. Big thing with community conversations and public outreach is that, you know, they, they did a good job of really handling the complex issue. And the big thing is, is the, the people that operate in the city of Tumwater, you know, all the way from person that prunes trees to a person that cuts them down or whatever, is that they understand the code. And it's, in the past, there's a, there's a number of people that don't even know the code exists and it's been around a long time. The primary issue to me on the second part is that the definitions are well thought out and they're simple to understand. Because if they aren't simple, you have to just cut it in half and have two definitions. Because the, when you read down and try to figure out who a professional person is, right now, the way the definitions are, it's still confusing. And the thing I look at is that just like in the profession that I'm in, I mean, I've been doing it for 50 years and yet there's certain jurisdictions that I can't operate just because of the way the code was done. And the city's updated code is getting there, too. So anyway, the definitions are so important and just it, once it's done, which will probably be a couple of years from now, the City Council approves this stuff, is that words should be out there anybody that comes in here and works in the city understands what we're trying to do.
Hannah, do you want to go? Do you have anything?
Yeah, the kind of the most of what I'm hearing and reading. You know, folks, folks are concerned about the plants and the trees and they, you know, the heritage trees and they want everything to be nice and pretty, but they also want to follow the rules. And I feel like we should just kind of make sure however we can that we're not penalizing them for following the new codes and everything, that they're kind of as a balance, I guess. Sort of what I'm gathering.
Brody?
Sure. Thank you. I'm brand new to this process, so I can't really answer question one, but just want to pause and just let you know how much I appreciate us going through this presentation for that very reason, so I can see where we've been, how we got to where we currently are and the rest of the work left in front of us. So I really appreciate that. Overall, I really agree with Board Member Jim Sador's comments that he presented and want to echo one especially as it relates to this. There's, in the current code, there's many avenues to avoid retention. I think regardless of the intent of the code or the vision of the plan, if the code's not, if the amendments aren't written with a particular level of intentionality, we can't close those holes adequately and we're never going to realize that vision or get to where, where we collectively think we want to be. So that is the number one issue that I'd like to see addressed.
All right, well, I definitely I, I think the, as far as the big takeaways from public outreach is we got a lot of people who were very interested in saving trees and enhancing wildlife habitat. It seems like we didn't get any from the other side as much. Like the development, like when you're developing a property, you know, how can you read through this and save trees and, you know, there has to be some incentive to save trees, otherwise they're not going to. And readability, I mean, it's got to, it's got to be able to be read through and understood, just like Mike was saying, that that's, that's the important part. And then enforcement. There's a lot of, you know, people saying different things about, you know, how you don't want to enforce too much on a homeowner because they might not be able to afford it, but let's go ahead and nail the developer who may or may not be following the code. And a lot of times, development seems like it's not, but it probably is more so than a homeowner who might not be aware of codes and going through permitting and, and things like that. So there's kind of that delicate balance of being able to save what we can and enhance what we can, but there also has to be that, you know, if there is going to be large development, how, how this code can help them kind of move through that process. And, you know, this goes hand in hand with the, the landscape code that is being updated and, you know, we need to also have it coincide with the, the newly minted Urban Forestry Manual. And all those things are important and it's, yeah, it's really, really important that the readability is, is there.
Want to say one more comment is you know, on the complexity, you know, goes back to the history of even Tumwater, you know, where they, they cut this town up into real small lots. In some cases, somebody owns maybe five or six lots and they've got a lot of trees on. And all the way from that kind of thing to a five acre tract with one house that the couple, you know, lived on it for 40 years and then they sell it and that five acres now goes into a whole bunch of houses. And so to meet the code of trees and then also work with all the city rules is it's so complex. And then when you get to the areas that they annex, you know, the newer areas, it's a whole different problem. Because they're bigger areas and some of them have been, they were logged 10 years ago and just left the Scotch broom and there's a tree on. Anyways, boy, there's a lot of issues.
Did we miss anybody? All right. Thanks, everybody. Brad, you want to keep going?
Well, thank you very much for, for sharing all that. We will be keeping track of how we address your particular concerns as we go through the process. And, and we're not going to necessarily report back at the end saying that this is what you said, what do you think now? We might do that. But, yeah, it's true. We're still at too complex. So I think, let me just quickly state, if you have any other concerns or things that you would like to share with staff at any time during this process, whether at the meetings or not, please feel to email either Alyssa or myself at any time or call. We can, we're open to meetings and so forth. We know there are some Tree Board members who are not able to attend Tuesday night meetings, so we'll be talking with them individually. So whatever we can do to make sure that you feel comfortable, you know, being heard and what your opinions are and how your thoughts are in the process, we'd appreciate that. A quick little background on the project. The city is, has a very long history of tree preservation and supporting those efforts. Most recently, in the 20 year, past 20 year time, we've seen entire city councils and mayors be elected solely on that issue. We are also in an unusual position for a lot of other jurisdictions and the fact that we're talking about preserving what we have versus adding a lot more to make up for all the stuff that's gone. So that, that's a, that's a real big difference in some of the other jurisdictions that, that are in the pugilist sound. As you're probably aware, there are many benefits for trees, both environmental, for social reasons, climate mitigation, aesthetics and so forth. Trying to capture and encapsulate all those things in the ordinance is difficult. We'll try to hit as many as we can. Hopefully with not just the same tree is going to be the, the only tree that's going to be responsible for meeting all the goals, but it might turn out that way. Joke. The environmental and equity issue is a very important one in terms of making sure that those areas of the city that are currently lacking in tree cover and suffering from side effects from that are, you know, are allowed the ability to, you know, add more trees over time. At the same time, making sure that there's not the burden on those communities necessarily to all the regulations in order to keep the trees. So we're trying to figure out a best way to, to balance those two things. A whole history here on the project background. We start first with the City Council, which has established four major priorities, strategic priorities for the city. Number, one of those four priorities was actions for urban forestry. The community in urban forestry is defined in our Urban Forestry Management Plan is all trees and vegetation on public and private property in the city. The plan measures success over time by the increase of tree canopy. A percentage of those areas increasing in canopy is a measure of success. So we're kind of having that in the back of our heads as we're doing the, the regulations of how would we support that goal directly and directly? The council, as I mentioned, adopted the plan in 2021. There were a number of implementation actions identified in the plan to ensure that the, the, the urban forestry was, is growing. Alyssa touched on a recent grant that sort of met the goals for six of those. That leaves 432 other actions in the plan. One of the, one of the important goals and actions in the plan is making sure our regulations are updated to match the intent and the actions in the plan itself, which is why we're doing this, as well as the tree vegetation and the street tree ordinance. In terms of relation to other strategic priorities, I'd like to call your attention to the goal number four in the Urban Forestry Management Plan, which is balancing the protection and support of the community and urban forest with other strategic, city strategic priorities, which include in part providing affordable housing, developing a walkable urban community, economic development, addressing climate change and protecting endangered species. We have a limited amount of area to try to accomplish a lot of things. And we just, this is just to, a reminder of that. Objective 4.1 under Goal 4 is updating the Urban Forestry Management Plan and our supporting regulations regularly and ensure they work in harmony with the other city's strategic priorities. So again, this is the next step in that process. And then finally, Action D under those is review tree preservation, landscaping and street tree regulations, regulate to ensure they're working with other strategic priorities, plans, regulations, and responding to changes in climate and overall implementing the, the urban forestry plan. So that is our broad guiding from the urban forestry plan for this particular work that we're doing. Working with other city's strategic priorities, let me go in a little bit of detail, but what we mean by that. So first of all, the regulations protecting the city's urban forest don't exist in a vacuum. We don't design the perfect regulations, have the discussion and ultimately forward a recommendation to the City Council on something that doesn't have to interact with everything else that we have in the city. Now, if we're talking about affordable housing, the same thing applies. So what's the best way to make housing So what's the best way to make housing affordable? Well, remove all regulations. So clean water, trees, all that kind of stuff. So we can't necessarily, you know, go whole hog in one direction without really affecting a lot of the other things that we have. So. There is important to understand that these regulations do support a number of city goals. Obviously, creating a healthy, equitable and climate resilient community is, is an enormous, uh, goal and this does move us in that direction. Uh, however, our proposed amendments could potentially conflict with other things that are strategic priorities, such as reducing sprawl, meaning that we're, uh, one of the big land use, uh, goals for the jurisdictions is to concentrate growth in urban areas rather than let it sprawl throughout the county uh, and take up more land and everything else. Uh, we're also supposed to be creating and maintaining affordable housing in the city. And affordable housing in, in the sense is not necessarily building brand new housing that is instantly affordable. It's really building enough housing that there's enough housing in the community that a portion can become affordable. So like the, the housing that's 25, 30 years old is affordable. Brand new has its own price point, shifts over time. We also have to protect endangered species more, and these are priority species. These aren't species that like trees as much. Um, as well as all those things we do for economic development, redevelopment to ensure that the people who live in the city have a place to work and that the, the overall goals of the city, we can actually have funding to do what the city wants to do for safer parks and so forth. There's probably no way that these proposed amendments won't result in some increase in cost to private or public landowners in the city, um, and renters. And so that's something that we are tracking and keeping in mind for. And a number of you made comments about making sure that we kept that in mind and how can we reduce that burden? Just by the fact that we're sort of increasing the number of regulations, we're increasing some of the requirements that need to occur through permitting and so forth. That means extra time for not only city staff to review, but extra time for people to prepare the required documents and so forth and so on. So we need to keep that in mind as we go through this process. And then, so finally, as, as part of all this, staff is asking the planning commission and the tree board to not only focus in on the details of what we're going to be presenting in, in terms of the regulatory side of things for tree protection, but also focus on how does it really affect the big picture? So if we require a certain level of tree preservation, how does this affect housing affordability? How's this affect so forth and so on? So we just ask that you keep that in mind as we do this. It's also important to politely ask the staff, wait a minute, this isn't going to work or this is going to work or have you thought about this? So we are here, on the staff side, have come up with some recommendations with, working with the watershed group. This is the start. This is not the end of how. Quick summary of the project's actions that we've taken to date. Uh, this is a timeline showing, uh, where we have started. We started this process actually with, uh, bringing on the watershed group in the summer of last year to help us with this process. Uh, they played a very instrumental role of helping us through, uh, working with the, uh, developing the public engagement process, having that roll out in the fall and the winter of this year. Uh, developing the, uh, gap analysis, which basically looked at what our current regulations are, identifying things that we probably should update or change, and also providing examples of other communities going through this process that we might want to consider. Moving into the summer and the spring where we are now, uh, this really, the, this, uh, process that we're going through is really going to take probably the summer to, for us to get through in terms of working together, uh, making sure that number one, the funding commission members and the tree board members are comfortable with the code, understand what's in it. That's first level. Once you understand it, you agree with it. Uh, and also look for opportunities to simplify as much as possible. So what, again, what we're presenting is our shot. It's not the final shot. So if there's other ways to do it, if there are graphic ways we can present these things rather than language, you know, strictly in code language, always welcome to do that. Uh, whatever makes it easier for people to understand who are outside of this room is the ultimate goal. We are anticipating right now that the update, uh, once the, the, the planning commission has the public hearing on the ordinance and forwards a recommendation to the city council, we expect the city council process will probably start late fall and go into the winter of 2024. Uh, there's a couple of reasons for that. Number one, uh, the council is going to be very focused on elections in the fall. We have four new members of the seven member council that are going to be elected. So we need to be able to capture not only the voices of those currently on the board, but also of the commission, but, uh, council, but also those who are going to be newly elected. So that's going to be an interesting dynamic to work through. Uh, on the background side of things, we also have a new city administrator who will be starting in mid-June. Uh, we'll expect a public announcement shortly. The council approved it just tonight. Uh, it will be interesting to see what her thoughts on the work we're doing because she will be working very closely with the mayor on the broader agenda of what we're doing and what our staff focus should be. We don't anticipate dramatic changes, but we do need to account for the potential for some changes. As part of the processes that I mentioned that's starting off, um, DCG, uh, watershed and staff worked together to develop a public engagement plan. And I just want to stress that all of the documents that, and all these processes that we're talking about are on the Tumwater Tree website, which I will, it's in part of the, in, in your staff report, the link for that. Uh, recordings of all the community conversations are available if you want to download and listen, watch them. All the materials that we're talking about can be found on that website. Uh, the goals of the, of public engagement strategy were really, there are multiple goals, but the number one was we wanted to solicit broad, uh, outreach uh, in, in responses back from the community on what this should look like. Uh, we wanted to engage a broad and diverse audience, uh, above and beyond the usual suspects, I guess. And then we needed to be able to take all that, compile it and distill it into things that we can turn into actionable guidance that will inform the development of the regulations themselves. So, simple, actually. Um, we think we've done that. Again, I encourage you to take the opportunity to look at the, what we, what the community has said to date, uh, review those things and make sure that we're on that track. The example here on the slide is just, uh, one of the many things that we included on the website and the posters and so forth on social media. Uh, we also included as part of the public engagement plan, a mailing to all property owners in the city, uh, letting them know about the process. Uh, and tumwatertreacity.com is the website for the project. That also includes all the information for landscaping code update and the street tree code update. So we will be keeping those updated throughout the process so you can see those three things because we know those three processes are going to have to relate. What we do in tree preservation is going to relate to landscaping and so forth.
Brad, just a quick interruption. Um, when you say that some of the, um, print materials have been mailed to property owners, um, have you been able to also reach out to like renting? Okay. Very good. Yeah, good.
Yeah, I can confirm. I received them too.
Good, good. Thank you.
Thank you for confirming that. Uh, but in addition to, um, you know, so there was a lot of things that were done to let people know what was happening and how to engage in the process. Uh, the formal discussions with the community took place as part of three meetings that started in November and went through January of this year. Um, and the community, these were called community conversations. They were online and in person, similar to this meeting. Um, and they were led by DCG watershed. Uh, as part of the first meeting, they gave a presentation to sort of give you the broad outline of what was happening as part of the project and then asked the community members to express their input on the following things. How do we address environmental justice and equitable allocation of resources as part of this process? Uh, what kind of programs and incentives can we use to achieve the goals that aren't necessarily, you know, thou shalt, but have you considered this, you'll get this? Carrots rather than sticks. Um, discussing ways to preserve and replace trees. Uh, designating special trees and groves. Groves would be say, uh, an area of three or more trees that are related, that are, are functioning together. And how allocating tree fund monies that are collected, either through fines or applications and so forth, can be used on the community level to increase the community forest. As part of community conversation number two, the community members who participated in that first community conversation were asked if they wanted to be, uh, participate as a specific focus group members. So it was a deeper dive into the issues with a, a smaller group of people. And based on this stakeholder input from that first meeting, at the second meeting, five topics were identified for discussion. Uh, environmental equity and resource allocation occurred again. Uh, protection of large trees and groves, tree retention replacement standards, development incentives and enforcement and penalties. All that information in turn was, um, pardon me. I am, I was looking at something that I can't change. Community conversation three, uh, this was a summary of what we heard of the first two meetings plus additional comments that we'd received over the course of that time. And then we focused on two big issues. How do we quantify tree retention? And also what are specific incentives we can use for tree preservation? And I'll just touch on some of those things as we go through the specific code amendments. So the larger themes that we heard from the community conversations that I heard echoed in the comments from the commissioners and the, and board members earlier were how do we protect large diameter trees? Uh, this actual size of those trees can vary depending upon species, but that was a, a really big issue. Considering the habitat value of trees, groves and, and corridors was also an important topic that we heard. Clear permitting requirements, understandable code, understandable of what do I need to do to do what I like to do? Stronger tree retention and replacement standards over what we currently have. Again, incentives for homeowners and property owners. Climate change mitigation and adaptation were a big concern. Stricter code enforcement, meaning that once the codes are in place, how do we make sure that people are actually following the codes? You know, are they getting a permit? Are they doing what they need to do and so forth? If they don't, what are the strong but fair penalties that should be included in the code? And finally, we decided that we wanted to use a credit system for determining tree retention and replacement. I'll get into detail, a little bit more on that, what that actually means. As I mentioned, there's also the process that watershed went through of developing what is known as a gap analysis, uh, that really helps hone in on what the, what the code currently says now. What do we need to cover that isn't covered currently by the code and how we could potentially do that? So the gap analysis, which you can find the report on the website, included interdisciplinary methods, what they did to get at the conclusions they reached, uh, analysis of the existing ordinance, meaning the existing code in 1608, additional recommendations that come outside of that. And then finally, how these things coordinate and work with other city plans and policies? Because it's not just 1608 that we're looking at. We're also looking at our development guide, which is our construction standards, uh, for projects in the city. How those can be, can be changed and so forth. So the potential changes we, that were identified in the gap analysis for the, in 1608 and permitting, we're covered five major things. Number one, a reorganization of how the code sections lay out so that it becomes more understandable. Looking at starting urban forestry review at the pre-submital stage. What the city currently has in, in terms of a structure for, if somebody comes in for a permit for development, there's no, what is known as a pre-submission conference. That is our, the opportunity for the applicant to come in. There's a set requirement of what they need to show. Uh, they sit down for an hour and a half with city staff, uh, our planning folks, development engineering, uh, building folks and sort of go over all the, the big details. You know, if you're going to do this, you need to consider this is really what the focus of those meetings are. The gap analysis says we really need to make sure that we bring in, if we're going to say that this, you know, pre, pre-preservation is such an important thing, it needs to be brought in, into this process earlier than somebody coming across the counter with a complete permit application to review. So starting at the pre-submital conference stage is an important thing. And having the applicant respond to questions and requirements at that time allows for probably better, uh, discussion of the options of what can be done to preserve and protect trees and make changes at an earlier stage before a lot of money and time is committed to producing a lot of plants. We also really needed to focus more on what needs to be part of harvest reports and site plan requirement. So the, what is the, the professional tree, uh, person have to produce? What does that look like? And what is the submittal requirements need to look like? Focusing on what tree retention and replacement standards are is, was also a very important part. So that means you have an existing site. What should be retained and how much? If things are going to be coming down because of development, how do you replace those to what level? That was, that's really getting at that. And then finally, a discussion of major and minor permitting types. We'll get into a little bit of detail of what the difference is between those two things. But there was a, a real emphasis on making sure we have clear standards for development projects and clear standards for when we don't have a development on the site, but people want to remove a tree or do something. So the priority complex, this, you'll notice a lot of themes keep repeating across from the community conversations, the gap analysis and your comments. Uh, tree retention and replacement comes up. Uh, tree protection designations for large diameter trees are increased over what they are now. Updating a methodology for determining quantifying tree retention. That will be part of the tree credit system that we'll talk about. The permit types and requirements we talked about. Incentives for development projects and for existing property owners to keep the trees they have. And then finally, maintenance requirements for tree tracts within homeowner associations and commercial and industrial projects. It's also a very important thing to make sure that we are keeping what we have. So all of that gets us to the point of, uh, lots of paper. So as I was joking to our staff, uh, we've, we've managed to reduce the current ordinance and, uh, chapter 1608 from 22 pages to 48. Very happy with that. In all seriousness, if you have any examples or things you think we need to cut out, we'd be more happy to do that. But with all of those things that we've just talked about, where this is our starting point, uh, what our proposal on the staff side is looking like. So just some notes on the staff report that you received as part of your packet. Uh, the staff report you received includes a whole section that shows both the current section of the code and the proposed section that will, that will take its place. The ordinance that you'll receive, uh, as part of this, the packet in June will show the entire strike through underlying version. The version that I have right now of that strike through underlying is really not readable because there are so many changes, uh, to the ordinance, which is why we went to the, here's a chunk of code that's, you know, you could read and here's a chunk of code that's new, uh, approach to this. If there are other ways that you think would be appropriate for presenting that information, let us know. Because we want to make sure that there's a connection between what we have now and what we're proposing to do and you can understand that.
Quick question on that point. Um, somebody mentioned earlier about how valuable, um, illustrations or schematics or other graphic representation. How does that work legally? Are those considered, is, is the illustration itself considered part of the code? Okay.
And we've also talked with our, our code, um, the people who actually compile and, and develop, put the code online essentially and print it. And said, how far can we go with graphics? How far can we go with, with examples that aren't necessarily text based? And they said, go as far as you want. Because we, you know, if we have figures in there, if we have whatever, they work. And so, uh, they've given us a lot of latitude in what we can do. If there's an issue, they'll let us know, but I, I don't foresee that whatever we can come up with, will create an issue for them.
For the accessibility of the code that uses a lot of images, um, within the text, if, uh, or would be broken through technology, if it could be interpreted differently or we would just have a visual that we think is exactly what the words say? Um, and the alt text would be, so what the words say so that there's no visual confusion?
Yeah, there are, you, thank you for bringing that up. There are requirements obviously for us to make sure that anything that we do, either in text or in, in pictures is accessible and, you know, understandable. in text or in pictures, is accessible and understandable by anybody using any kind of assistive technology. That goes for our website, that definitely goes for our municipal code. So as part of the whole process of being able to use that information and use it off the code website, that will be part of that process. Because there are very strict requirements of what we have to follow on state law to make sure that we meet that standard. Thank you for bringing that up.
Good point, thank you.
Watershed Group first started developing the draft code shortly after we finished the community conversations, using what was identified in the gap analysis and also the main themes that we heard from the community conversations and the other public outreach. So that's a list, and plus, we met with the planning commission and the tree board a number of times during this process to sort of, here's where we're going, here's what we're thinking, to sort of start that process. So all of that came into the development of the actual code. In the code, in the, excuse me, in the staff report, you'll note that there are sections in red that are called out that are still under review by staff. We've done that because there are a few issues that we're still working with our permitting staff on, we're still waiting for review from our city attorney, and there's some just big issues that we want to make sure that we are all in agreement on the staff side before we say, this is what we think. What we may ultimately do is have some areas where we say, here's a range, here's what this range means, you know, the end of the range means, and here's what the other end of the range means. Because that's kind of the nature of what this may result in. So as part of your next joint meeting in June, you'll be getting, as I mentioned, the updated staff report that shows all the code changes that are proposed, plus the ordinance showing that, all the details of what will be struck through and added and so forth. Starting with the individual sections of the code and what staff suggests that you focus on. Now, this isn't to say that you shouldn't be looking at the entire code and entire sections, but these are things I think that are probably a little bit more important than some others. You've heard from a number of the board members and commissioners and also some of the comments tonight that how important the definitions are. And yes, that's incredibly important. So what we have done on the staff side and Watershed have done is we reviewed all the definitions to make sure that they're clear and easy to understand. We removed some definitions that are no longer used as part of the new code. We wanted to make sure also that all the definitions that were used are consistent throughout the shortened version of 46 pages. You'll notice a few more definitions of trees in there, including heritage trees, landmark trees, significant trees, and so forth. Because a lot of different things come into play in the code, and we wanted to make sure that when we say the phrase significant tree, this is what it means, a tree of six inches or more and has these characteristics. And then we added some additional definitions as we needed to as part of the process to make sure the code was understandable. There are particular definitions that we really ask that the commission and the board members look at in detail, make sure that they are comfortable and understand with what we are proposing. The first deals with buildable area. In the code, buildable area is a very important concept because essentially that is the area where tree replacement retention can occur. Buildable area excludes things like critical areas and their buffers. It excludes areas that are set aside for development of future roads. It's everything that a construction project or site could encompass. So that's the area that when we do our calculations for tree credits and what, how the process goes through, that's the area we focus on. Critical root zone is very important because that really sort of defines the pruner of the tree, meaning how far out the tree goes in terms of its roots and its canopy. Because anything that occurs within that area is, from the purposes of the code, is interpreted to be negatively affecting that tree. So if we cut into the root system, that's going to harm the tree, so we want to avoid that. We have a definition of what development is in the code. That's important because that's the trigger for a lot of the permitting requirements. If you are doing a quote unquote development, you follow this process. If you're not doing a development, you follow the minor process. We're still working through grove trees in the code. We have a definition, but we haven't, on the staff side, figured out the best way to make sure that they're valued, above and beyond the individual trees that make up the grove. So what we may do as part of the process, and we present back to you in June, is note that, hey, this is an area we really need to talk through about what this could look like. Because we recognize that grove trees should be protected to a different level than singular trees. We define hazard, unhealthy trees and nuisances as part of the process. Each of those is different, and they all have different requirements and changes in the code. We define what landmark tree. And landmark tree can mean a number of things, and you'll find that there's a table in the definition section that starts first with a list of individual tree species of a certain size. It could be 24 inches, it could be in some cases all the way down to 12 inches, depending upon the species, that are special, meaning that the bigger they are, the more value they provide environmentally and so forth. And then there's the catchall for any tree that's not defined being a certain size. There's one other thing that we want to keep in mind with the landmark trees, and we've had discussions about this, and this involves trees that are protected under another section of our code under habitat, for vegetation and for animal habitat. This is getting at the Oregon oak, Gary oak species, for example, which are on the state protected list. They're treated differently than typical landmark trees. Essentially, all the things that they function under is taken care of by that special section of the code, not the tree preservation section. Because there are higher protections in that code that are mandated by the state versus what the tree preservation code deals with. So if you're looking for a particular species and you're not finding it in that list, note that it might be already in, just part of that other section of code. We define what a project permit is. It sounds like a fairly obvious thing sometimes, it isn't. Because it's an important threshold to say that just because you're pulling a building permit for interior remodel, you're not infecting anything outside of the interior, you don't need to submit for tree retention. So we needed to sort of carve out what was covered. You touch anything on the outside, we need something. If you touch entirely on any inside of a building, we don't need something. We talked a little bit about what a significant tree is, which is sort of like the first threshold of what is a protected tree under the ordinance, six inches or more in diameter at standard height. Diameter standard height is anything, the diameter of a tree at four and a half feet, basically chest height typically. We define tree. Okay, that's kind of silly. But we actually had to, sorry, no problem. We had to sort of explain what's the difference between vegetation and a tree, and we did it via size measurement. Trees that are less than six inches and down to three inches do have value in terms of tree credits. They don't, may not be necessarily protected to the same level, but they do have value. And then finally, we had to define what vegetation is. We asked again that you look at all those as well as the other definitions we have in there to make sure that they make sense. And if they don't make sense, please, 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 please let us know.
Brad, I want to pause just real quickly and make sure if anybody's got any questions right now, I'm just kind of looking at the time, it's about 8:20. Anybody on Zoom or here in the room? All right, I have a question, but does anybody here have a? I'll go and quickly say in the definitions section, and maybe I just don't know how to look at this, but I, what I didn't really see there was some way to define what the consequences are to, or disruption of the values of a particular tree or a grove or a corridor, or even a larger kind of a thing from removals. You know, what is, what is the consequence if we do that? What are we going to lose? And I don't know if the definitions section is in there, but maybe there could be a, maybe some sort of a table that describes those kinds of things so that we understand, or so that somebody coming in for a permit down the line knows, if you have this kind of consequence, this is when you're going to trigger, you know, some sort of need for the permit or the, whatever kind of a deal. I'm looking at some way to get to the consequence, taking out trees. Yeah, yeah.
So elsewhere in the code, we do establish thresholds for that kind of thing. Sort of, here are the triggers. If you do this, you know, you need this permit. Or if you do this, here are the consequences. If you don't have the proper approvals and all that stuff.
Not so much the consequences to the person, but to the value that we have for those trees or that grove or corridor or that ecosystem that's there. And it, it kind of gets to system services. Maybe there's some way to think about that.
Yeah, and I think that perhaps will be something that we need to discuss further about as part of the values that we assign in the code to groves. You know, what's the, what, how much, how many tree credits are they worth? What, you know, why is that important and that kind of thing? So I think we'll get at that.
Maybe so, yeah.
And probably elsewhere, but not necessarily in the definition.
Okay, okay.
You raised an important point about that. We have a section, we've updated the current section on heritage trees to add more information to how the city evaluates heritage trees, and also how, what's the process for heritage tree removal, as well as adding some requirements for a written landowner consent and some notice on the title. So what that means is if there's a change in ownership, that new owner understands and knows that there is a heritage tree on the site. And let me define first what a heritage tree is. Heritage trees are those trees that may be a significant tree or may be a landmark tree, but they are special in terms of historic value or cultural value or some other reason, and a nomination is made to the tree board for a particular tree in the city, based on those reasons. The tree board considers that, offers a recommendation to the council. If it's a recommendation, yes, this should be considered a heritage tree. The council makes a vote on accepting it or not. What that does is it creates another level of protection for that tree, above and beyond the tree, but is elsewhere in the code for, say, a landmark tree or a significant tree. There are processes for taking a heritage tree out of being a heritage tree due to health reasons and so forth, but we need to be able to specify in more detail what that process is, and also make sure that it's clear that that heritage tree designation goes with the land, not with the property owner him or herself.
Mr. Byas, it looked like you maybe had a question?
He answered it.
Okay, got it, okay.
We added a new section in the code for landmark trees. Again, we're recognizing larger trees should be retained more than smaller trees because of the greater benefits both on the carbon sequestration side and habitat, and as feeder trees or other trees and so forth. A lot of good reasons to, to want to preserve landmark trees at a higher rate than others. We talked a little bit about the definition in the definitions section of landmarks. The size threshold I like to mention for landmark trees really vary across the state in other jurisdictions that have taken this approach. So what we're proposing is our proposal. We do suggest that if you'd like to take a look at what others have done and ask questions based on that, that would be really, that's also an important thing. I talked a little bit about the critical habitat protections component, which will still be addressed as part of section 1632, which is our fish and wildlife habitat protections section. That draws in both the federal and the state listed species that we have to protect. And then we note again that greater protections for landmark trees need to be balanced again with strategic priorities. So we can't necessarily protect landmark trees at the expense of everything. We can make it more difficult, but probably not to the level of thou shalt never, ever remove one. We had to figure out a way to assign value to trees. And we had a discussion with the tree board and the planning commission back in January about potential ways to do this. We looked at what is known as a tree canopy approach, which is sort of looking at the entire canopy on a site, assigning a value to it. And we also looked at a way of looking at individual trees on a site and assigning a value, a numeric value based on size and the type of tree. We ultimately settled on a proposal that includes the tree credit approach. What the tree credit does is it's a general indicator for tree canopy, for tree size and canopy over time, meaning that this is a value of, a generalized value of the tree. If it's a six inch tree, it has this worth. If it's an 18 inch, it has this worth. We look at the tree diameter by species to correlate for canopy, age, and ultimate size when assessing retention values for specific species. This means for retention that will have a certain value of trees assigned to an entire site, say a number of 24. A five inch tree has this value, it may be a 12. This other tree of six may have a one. Add them all up together, do we meet that or not? And then, so if we have a certain level for retention and a site retains those trees, has enough trees, tree credits, after development to do that, they're done. If they have to remove trees because of development, there's a replacement factor that comes in. How many trees do they have to plant to make up for that loss? So that's where the tree credits come in. It gives us a way of, first of all, understanding what the value of the trees are on the site currently, where they need to be improved, where they're fine, and so forth over time. This is another section that we're still working through on the staff side of a way to look at how this could work across different land use zones or uses in terms of certain areas having a higher need for tree credits than others. And this goes back to the whole tree canopy discussion and the table in Urban Forestry Plan where we assign certain zone districts in the city with a higher percentage goal of those districts being covered in canopy. So for example, in our single family residential districts, we say we need to have 50% of those, of those districts covered in tree canopy to meet our goal. In industrial and commercial zones, it's 25%. In other zones, it's a slightly different, but it's a fairly broad measure between those two things. So what we're trying to work through right now on the staff side is, is the way to try to express that as part of the tree credit goals in the code. How does that work in terms of value and does it work? So that's one of the things that we're still working on. Once we have that, it'll be part of the code, and it'll be definitely a big discussion point.
Good question there. Is diameter by species the only metric being considered for the evaluation?
It is a simplified system.
Good.
So to get at your particular question, we're using this because of the ease of data collection. Regardless of that ease, that we don't need to go deep into aerial imagery or online data resources, and we could have a quantifiable way of a applicant producing the information, a quantifiable way for our non-arborist permit reviewers to evaluate that information, check it in the field if necessary. And so what we're trying to do is, we, we don't necessarily have the internal experience. We don't have an arborist on staff yet, not yet. Melissa, we'll have one by next week. Until that time, Thursday, you're having somebody start. So we need to have a way that it's, you know, a typical landowner can use this process without having to go to the expense and the, you know, level of detail perhaps that other methods may need. Again, the tree credit method does have its own cost implications. It's not a straight, one tree, oh, you've got a tree on the site, replace it with these two trees, period, which is essentially what we have in the current code. It is some evaluation of the size of that time, finding a certain value to it, and making sure that whatever's on the replacement side equals that value and over time. This is just a quick example. This is from the city of Burien's code. We've referenced this a few times. Burien had just finished their update of the code, so it's a fairly recent example. This is looking at a 5,400 square foot. This is looking at a 5,400 square foot, single family residential property. In their code, they assign one tree credit for 1,000 square feet of a developable area. This could translate into buildable area under our code. From that, we determine that they need to have a minimum of 4.5 minimum tree credits for that site. So you take your total square footage, you divide it by 1,000, which is the one tree credit, you get the minimum tree credits. We look at the trees that are currently on the site and assign a value based on their diameter at standard rest time. They've got a 20 inch tree, which is worth four credits under their system, a 15 inch that is worth three credits and so forth. Add up all those numbers, get 13 credits. So they're ahead on this site with what they need to have for minimum tree credits. So they don't trigger a replacement unless they, for whatever reason, remove more trees than bring them below that number.
Brad, question about that?
Yes.
Did you say that's a buildable area or like lot size?
This is, in our code and in Burien's code, they call it developable area. We call it a buildable area. So it is not the lot size.
Yeah.
It is, it is, it's a, so we exclude things like critical areas and their buffers from that calculation, all those kinds of things.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
Now, the numbers that Burien is assigned in this case aren't necessarily the ones that we were going to be using as part of our code. This is just an example of how it could look. We'll come back to this as part of our code and we'll have more discussions about what that actually looks like. What we're replacing with a proposed code is a fairly simple way of measuring trees on site. So currently, we allow for tree removal based on a number of factors. So any, on any parcel of land in the city, you can take 30% of the existing trees over a 10-year period. So you're capped at that. So if you take more than 30% of the trees, it causes other issues. On sites that are proposed for development, you have to keep at least 20% of the trees on the site, of the existing trees. Notice this isn't, you know, we're not assigning a canopy value, we're not assigning a size value, it's just 20% of the trees. Or 12 trees per acre and must be retained or whatever's greater. We also have a requirement in the code that says six trees over every three years can be removed on developed properties except for heritage trees, which again is that special category we have, or in green belts or critical areas. So again, our code takes out the critical areas. This is our, this is what we have now. We don't necessarily think this is the best way or necessarily this is working as well as we would like it to work. Hence our proposal to go to a little bit more elaborate system for doing this. We also have a section that deals with the tree account. And what we're really focusing here is a list of things that we can use that tree account for. First of all, what is collected under the tree account? It could be fines, it could be other things. And then ultimately, where can we spend that money in the city and what? And we have, want to make sure we have strict guidelines on that. We have a section that we've added on tree and vegetation removal permits. And it's a, new permit types that are differentiated based on what the project size is and the type. We've added more specificity on permitting types and requirements, trying to streamline the process. We have what are known as waivers within the current code. That doesn't mean we're waiving the code requirements, we're just waiving certain permitting requirements. And how we could streamline these processes to more allocate our staff resources for small scale permit review. I've got a single family house, I want to take a tree out versus I'm going to take a site building on a new development. As part of that process, we've updated types of reports and plans that need to be submitted, including the level of detail as part of the review. There are two permit, removal permits, tree removal permit types that we're talking about. Currently, our code is based around land clearing. In fact, it's really that we get a land clearing permit out of the process. We're moving away from that. We're moving towards either a minor tree removal permit, or we call it actually a minor tree or vegetation removal permit, or a major tree and vegetation removal permit. The important differences are for a minor tree removal permit, this would be tree removal on properties that are not part of the development permit application being removed. You know, single family house, I want to take a tree down. Major tree permits are everything else. That's everything that is a part of a development permit application. Come in with a site plan, come in with a subdivision application, whatever, you're going to trigger the requirement for a major permit. We have a section now that deals entirely with what that means for not associated with development. It establishes its own permit applications, mental requirements and review process. It says that tree removal permits are administrative approvals. It defines when you need to replace a tree that comes down. This is important because in some cases, if you're, say, your tree credits are high and you're above whatever the minimum is that you need to have, you may not need to replace a tree if you take one down. But in some cases, you will need to replace the tree if you take it down because you'll be below the number of tree credits required. It defines that how many significant trees can be removed without a permit. So remember, we talked a little bit about you can take 30% over 10 years, or you can take six trees over two years. I can't remember exactly. This is, gets at that. Those, the thresholds that we're looking at for that, and this is another area that we're still working on the final details for that, is it's going to be a lot stricter than what we currently have. And we're looking at potentially measuring it by the size of the lot, varying by the size of the lot, how many trees you can take down. We're looking at what that actually could look like. We're running some examples right now. Erica's been really working with our pruning staff on how that could work. When we finish that, that will be part of the ordinance and part of the staff report.
Go back to those, one, you're right before that. Just the comments, see, that says tree and vegetation removal. And then most of the stuff talks about tree removal.
Correct.
Some of the big things in some areas, and that's where the major permit will come in, that they'll go in and remove the understory vegetation, damage in the root systems of most of the trees in the area.
Mm-hmm.
Yet today, they can just do that.
Right.
And usually they're doing it to show the property.
Right.
So it's important that if we're going to keep tree and vegetation removal permits in there, remember that.
Yep, and thank you. That's exactly what we're trying to get at as part of the tree and vegetation removal side of things. What we are still working on is trying to quantify the vegetation. What does that look like? What's, you know, what's the threshold? So that will be an important point of discussion with you as part of this process because I have to be honest, on the staff side, we're still kind of struggling with how to quantify that. Trees are the easy part. It's the vegetation that we're having some issue with.
I'd like to make one more comment here. There's been a couple mentions tonight of the importance of clarity and readability when it comes to definitions. And several people in the room have said major permit or minor permit. However, what I'm seeing here says minor tree permit or major tree permit. I know this is pretty in the weeds in terms of syntax, but if you're looking for clarity on your general public as your user, I would recommend making a speech to that syntax and saying major permit for tree removal and stuff like that. What you hear has slipped up and we're supposed to be the ones really thinking about it.
Yeah, and any suggestions besides the syntax that we're proposing in the code language, which I think is kind of clumsy, because we call it major tree and vegetation removal permit, which, you know, flows off the tuck. You know, anybody could hear that once and be able to repeat it. I'm open to suggestions on how to shorten, but still encapsulate all the things that we want to do. And I, you called out a very good point because on the presentation, I was trying to shorten things down to make it a little bit more understandable, but also create issues.
In doing so, it also becomes a little misleading if I'm a general user thinking, well, what I have here is a major tree, which permit do I need? And that's not the intent. I think we could improve that.
So tree removal associated with development, this is also a new permit section. It establishes what it needs to be submitted with, and these permits would be reviewed at the very same time that a preliminary plot application, a site development permit, a building permit that affects the land outside the building is reviewed. So the intent is to do it all at once. We don't have, you know, you don't get approval for a tree and land clearing and go ahead and do that before you get approval for something else. That is not how our system works. It establishes a requirement for including a tree retention plan, which is important because the tree retention plan includes a lot of details. And also, it includes replacement plans for trees if the property falls below the number of tree credits that are required. So tree retention is its own little subsection because the details are important. It's sort of going into the weed, not going into the weeds, part of this particular process. Again, weeds are not protected under our code. You're getting each and every plant to make sure that they are. Poisonous is okay, but weeds are not.
I'm trying to stay to that, because weeds are a little.
Yeah, I think we, I think we. So this tree retention, first of all, does it, does an important thing. It gives us, it establishes tree condition rating standards. So there's, this is the health of the tree comes into play here. So we've got a certain number of trees on the site. However, those trees may be of various levels of healthiness. What are the values of that? How are those calculated and how are those used? Part of the process. It establishes what kind of trees and species and locations are more important than others for retention. So we've established sort of a hierarchy. Retaining first in this area because of this, retain them here next because of this, and on the bottom, it's this. So in the code sections, you'll see sort of a ranking of what we would like people to focus on before others. This also goes in, this also provides additional protection for retention of large diameter trees such as landmark trees and others. We've updated how retained trees are identified, surveyed and protected, strengthened tree protections by outlining some very detailed requirements that are readily enforceable. That's very important because again, our inspectors aren't necessarily arborists, they're not necessarily trained in this, but they need to be able to identify an issue in the field that needs to be corrected. This tree retention plan section creates standards for tree retention, protection and replacement plans. So protection plans are those plans that need to be part of a construction set that say, how are you going to avoid impacting the critical root zones of the trees on the site? What level of fencing do you need? How do those need to be marked? How do those need to be shown on the other plans and all those kinds of things? We, in the replacement tree section, we, this is again, replacement kicks in if there's not sufficient tree credits on the site. It establishes tree replacement standards and ratios related to tree credits. Updated standards relate to tree species section. I need to, I'm not sure, selection, it was the word I needed to use there, but I don't recall, location and quality, all those kinds of things coming into play for replacement. In the current code, on sites without a development proposal, again, back to the single family house where they're just taking a tree out, a one-to-one replacement ratio is required. If they are, if it's a tree that's 24 inches or more, it's a two trees for one tree coming out. Again, the tree that's going in is a two-inch caliper tree. On new development, the replacement ratio is three to one. So you take out a tree of any size, you have to replace it with a minimum of three two-inch trees. And also establishes how old they need to be and similar to the species of the trees on the site. That's our current code. We are, our sections, we have a number of sections dealing with maintenance and instruction. I'll just touch very briefly on this. It establishes requirements for maintenance. First of all, an establishment period of three years to make sure that what is planted survives. And then also, we are working through some details on how ongoing maintenance would work outside of, beyond those three years. Maintenance agreements, meaning some formal agreement between the property owner and the city that is recorded, you know, is applicable to the property, not necessarily to the owner of the property. We have a section on tree pruning requirements, how we maintain trees on city property, failure to maintain, what does that mean, and performance and maintenance bonds as part of that process. A lot of this is carryover from the existing code that's been updated, but some of it is new. We have an existing section of the code called exemptions, which we are keeping, but we're tweaking and expanding. We've reviewed what our current exemptions are and found that they are generally consistent with the exemptions that are found in other recently updated tree preservation codes. So what we have currently is now not really out of. We have some additional exemptions based on our unique circumstances. We are, as I mentioned, we have two-thirds of the city is habitat for endangered species, endangered prairie species, the Oregon, the Olympia pocket gopher, which is a southern two-thirds of the city, which also includes endangered species. So there are certain things that we want included here for conservation lands that are part of a federally approved permit related to the, or habitat conservation plan or private conservation plan that's approved. There would be exemptions to this code in order to create and maintain prairie habitat for conservation. What that means is essentially if it's being conserved under prairie habitat, that's it. There's no other uses on that site. There's no trails, there's no buildings, there's nothing. It's just protected habitat. So it has value above and beyond the habitat in terms of carbon sequestration values and so forth, but it's a different animal than dealing with the tree preservation sites. We have experimented with tree houses for gophers. It wasn't successful. They had too many parties, the level of beer cans and so forth underneath the trees was excessive. We're going to have to take the trees out. We also have a section called alternative plans in the current code. And this is a section where essentially the intent is if somebody can come up with a way that is better than our current code that provides better protections than our current code, we would consider it. How we craft, how that's reviewed and how that, you know, is shown in the code and all that is a challenge because it leaves it up to administrative approval for staff to have the ability to say, yes, that works or it doesn't work according to the code. So we've added some section, added parts to that to try to tighten that a bit to make sure that it does what we want it to do in terms of, you know, if an alternative plan is proposed, it gives us greater value than what currently the code could provide. We updated the appeals and violations sections. There are, current code, both civil and criminal penalties as part of this. So we've updated both of those. Included in there, under the criminal codes, is an update of our penalty section. Currently, we have a penalty, if you do a land clearing without a permit, I think it's a $1,000 fine if it's an acre or less, and then maybe slightly more if you do more than an acre, that's not enough. So we've revised it with a table based on number of trees taken out and everything else. We'll definitely have some more discussions about how, if that's workable or not. Other related issues I want to make sure that you know about that we haven't reflected yet in the code, but we probably will. Number one, as part of the gap analysis and community feedback, we did identify, and I believe one of the public comments also identified the need to provide some way of providing licensing for regulating businesses that do tree pruning in the city. So we are definitely looking at how we can require both registration and education with penalties if trees are not pruned properly or they're removed improperly and so forth. if trees are not pruned properly or they're removed improperly and so forth. We are still working through the details of this, but this sort of capsule captures sort of the scope of what we're looking for. Second issue came up earlier this year when we were updating our Thurston Hazard Mitigation Plan, which is a FEMA-required document that looks at all potential things that could occur in the city from earthquakes, floods, et cetera. Urban fire or wildlife fire is a huge risk, especially in the southern portion of the city. The state building code, the new state building code, which was officially, we got official word on end of April, updated and is basically added to what we don't currently have, what is known as the International Wildland, excuse me, International Wildland Urban Interface Code. What that means is if there are cer, there are areas of the city that have a certain percentage of vegetation to building, high level vegetation to building that are susceptible to fire, there are far more stricter requirements for those areas in terms of the type of vegetation, types of trees, nearness of those vegetation and trees to buildings and everything else. It's a big deal. We're not necessarily excited about it. We recognize that it's something that we need to consider, obviously, because, you know, there are recent wildlife fires. If you look at Santa Rosa is a great example of what happens when a wildfire gets into the city itself. We do definitely have some of those situations or potential, but this is a very broad thing that's required now, that will be required as of July 1st, when we go through the code update process. More than half the city is covered by these requirements. We're still kind of digesting what that actually looks like in terms of how we, when we take what we're proposing here and then comparing it to what this wildland interface code will require us to do. So stay tuned, because we think it's going to, we will find out, and we'll definitely bring you more information. But I just want to make sure that you're aware of that, because it will be part of not only this discussion, but also our landscaping code discussion.
Brad, just a quick pause. Are you good for time? We just, we have less than ten minutes, and I don't know if we will have questions tonight. Can you get us out?
I'm shooting.
Okay.
Eight minutes to wrap. Quick update on the status of the other updates. I mentioned that we're updating the street tree code and the street tree plan. We followed a very similar process with this code as the other one. The important information on here is we are now in the process of drafting the code amendments to point twenty-four plus the street tree plan. We intend to bring that forward this summer for consideration and discussion by the tree board and the planning commission. And we're probably expecting and hoping to have that ordinance ready for adoption by the end of the year. Similar schedule for the landscaping code, which is a little bit behind that. We didn't want to overwhelm you too much, but we figured if you got too rowdy, we would just dump everything together at once. Keep that in mind, please. We are, the staff is in the process right now. We have some SEJ alliances is helping us with this. A watershed is helping us with the street tree plan. We're trying to coordinate all this work together so we don't have, you know, there are, there's overlap between all these things. But we expect to have those code amendments ready probably by July for landscaping code. Next steps in the process, we're looking at starting CIPA review and notice of intent. That will be either late May or June. Those are processes that we have to follow for any and all ordinance updates. We have some, for any of the members of the community who want to submit comments, we have some guidance on how we would like to do that. We're open to getting written comments at any time. They can send it by email to our stemwatertrees@seofstemwater.wad.us or mail the drop-off at the community development department. We want to make sure that if there are any comments from the community, that there, that we have sufficient time to put them in the packet for your consideration. So we ask that any comments that would like to be considered, to give them at least a week ahead of the meeting so they can be part of that. We will have the option, our work session format is set up primarily for discussions by the tree board members, by the planning commissioners as a group together. It is at the discretion of the tree board and the planning commission chairs if they would like to take public comment during those discussions, or as with this meeting, have public comment at the very beginning. Just be aware that's an option. We talked a little bit about our work session process. Our work sessions are really intended to be hybrid meetings, like this one, online and in person. They will be starting at seven. They'll be on Tuesday nights. We provide information, how you can access all the information here. There will be a follow-up for the planning commission only on the 23rd, just sort of, what did you hear? Did you have any additional questions? So we apologize, we didn't want to drag the tree board into fourteen or fifteen meetings a month, but that's always a possibility. Depending, we can talk to your spouses, some of you and others about how they might like that or not. But we wanted to allow as much time basically to, for discussion as we can. As I mentioned, the June joint work session on the 13th will be the formal starter review of the ordinance. The ordinance will be presented, the staff report will be updated. At each of these work sessions that are coming up, we're going to kind of focus on specific topics, and we're going to be flexible about those topics depending upon the discussions. Our expected focus of the June work session will be focusing on the definition section, landmark trees, tree credits, and the tree account. So those are kind of, just a heads up on those are kind of looking at. The June, second June meeting for the planning commission, again, you'll follow up for the planning commissioners on those topics. July meeting, we're proposing for the joint meeting to focus on tree retention, replacement, what the tree and vegetation permits will look like, exemptions and alternative plans. So sort of the focus on that. In August, we are looking at a focus on the rest of the, basically the rest of the code. This is a catch-all. If there are other things that we haven't covered that we need to cover, we will switch stuff around. But again, your input would be really appreciated on how we do that. We are proposing now to aim for a public hearing on the ordinance at the last meeting for the planning commission in September. I think we'll have sufficient time over the summer to go through all this. If we don't need the time, we won't take the time. But this is what we anticipate that we'll probably. Talk a little bit about what the hearing would look like. The intent here is the planning commission and the tree board will have discussions about the ordinance. Tree board will offer their recommendation basically to the planning commission to consider as part of the public hearing. Planning commission is the body that gives the formal recommendation to city council on any and all code updates. So they'll take into mind the discussions with jointly with the tree board, community input and their own input as part of their Council approval process, pardon me, is all thrown for public comments, for how to find agendas and packets are filed there. We are aiming, we are providing updates to the general government committee, which is the subcommittee of the city council, on what we've, since we started this process. We're going to continue that process tomorrow morning at eight o'clock. We'll be having a similar presentation with them over what, where we are, what we've done. You're welcome to join me at eight o'clock. We'll be making donuts. And as I mentioned, the actual consideration of the planning commission's recommendation on the ordinance will probably be occurring in January, probably next year. So, any questions? Again, if we don't have time, or you don't have a specific thing ready tonight, always call, reach out. I think for those members of the tree board who are not able to make these meetings, we'll have special time set aside to meet with them, sort of walk through what their concerns are, what the discussions have been and so forth. But if you would like to have a time, either individually or whatever, to talk with staff or present written comments or questions, please do so. Please let me know.
Great. Looking around the table on Zoom, do people have questions of Brad or comments on what we've heard? Pretty dense, a lot of stuff, a lot of work. Go ahead.
Congratulations on going through this whole thing without mentioning Pi.
Yes, with that intention.
Question, what, if any, of the language that you've provided in the packet is subject to change before these work sessions that we'll be addressing?
The stuff that is currently in the staff report, I don't anticipate there'll be dramatic changes in, say, with the format or the particular sections. The changes are most likely to occur in those areas that are in red. So if there's a change, you know, we're going to be providing additional information to fill in the details. If some of those details have effects in other areas of the code that you're going to be looking at, we'll make those changes. But as part of the process, presenting that next time will tell you what has changed from what you've been looking at.
Do you anticipate we'll have that ahead of time?
You'll have, our intent and our requirement is we want packets out by the Wednesday before the meeting.
Okay.
So you'll have six days to take a look at.
Okay, thanks.
The additional code stuff. But we wanted to make sure that you had a chance, you had the month essentially, to look at, here's, here's the whole thing, little tweaks in there, but at least here's a start. So you have some ability to, you know, to delve into. Will be, because we're doing the joint work sessions on a monthly basis, you'll have a month to digest and if we, you know, any changes and so forth.
Cool. Well, we are right about nine. And any last chance for any questions? But otherwise, we'll have to vote to extend the meeting, or I can entertain a motion to adjourn.
Well moved.
Mr. Tobias.
Oh. Second Commissioner Golds.
Very good. Oh, good deal. Okay, that was, Vice Chair Sullivan moved to adjourn? Think it's what it was, or?
Yes.
Great. And seconded by Commissioner Tobias. Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing any, all in favor of your journey tonight? Please say aye.
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 Attention, thank you.
Did you pose? Good deal. Thanks, you guys. That was very, very thorough. That was a lot of info.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, everybody.
Brad, appreciate it.
Oh, is it?